Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education, Putnam Valley Board of Education meeting of Thursday, December 12th, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to begin by resolving to approve the minutes of the business meeting of November 21st, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, I would like to announce that the Treasurers' report for August 2019 is available in the Business Office. And now, if you have the agenda, I'm going to play around with the order a little bit. And we're going to ask to our student representatives, the Board of Education, to go now. They've been on a trip all day and they have work to do, so we're going to let them do their report now.
We would like to start off by saying that the First Annual Winter Spirit Week is happening next week at the high school. Every, all the students are excited because we love the Fall Spirit Week with Color Wars. We are introducing a pep rally with staff versus the students and everyone is excited to participate.
We also had our very first snow day of the year, followed by our new delays. And as much as everyone loves both of them, it also helps our new seniors because a lot of them are still learning how to drive and a lot of them still are learning to get their license. So it really helps them, you know, figure out how to control on the road with the winter weather.
You're saying the correct decision was made?
Yes, definitely.
I want to make sure that was there.
That's the only time you'll ever hear that. By the way, you said it yourself.
The students were happy. Alright, thank you very much. Moving on to the presentations, and I love when presentations are students.
Alright, so good evening. This is certainly one of the highlights of the entire year, where we get to hear from our sophomore science research students and a little bit about their proposals and a plea, a friendly plea for mentors. So I will introduce Mr. Zupan. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for letting us talk here at the Board of Ed meeting every year. So again, yes, it's our plea for mentors. So we have 12 total sophomores this year. Last time I talked to you guys, we were going over like all the great things that the students have done last year. And since we last talked, those 10 students went to the International Genius Olympiad and all 10 placed at the international level. So thank you to the Education Foundation, to the Board of Ed, that allowed, that gave us the money to get, let us all 10 to go there. So they all placed at that competition. Then we had, this current year's juniors just finished their 20-page papers today. So if you've seen them the last week, they haven't, you know, they've learned what coffee is and they've learned what sleepless nights are and they finally turned in their 20-page papers today. And they, last year, those were sophomores that were presenting here. And over the summer, they completed their research, but they also won. Out of the 17 students we had, we had 12 of them place at their sophomore competition. So very, very excited to see what they can do this year. So last year, we had 12 students be competing as juniors and seniors. This year, we have 24. So I also know what sleepless nights are and going through all these different forms of stuff. But today's for the sophomores. So the sophomores here are there to present their plea for mentors. So don't worry if you sound a little bit confused. I am as well. It's amazing what these students have done just between September and now. So without further ado, I will let them talk about their projects. So first, as Fiona Chen.
Good evening. My name is Fiona Chen and I'm currently researching antibody drug conjugates, or ADCs, and their effects on cancer. So essentially antibody drug conjugates can combine two things, monoclonal antibodies, which have a highly, or are highly specific, and cytotoxic drugs. By combining these two, they can effectively kill cancer cells, making a very effective pharmaceutical class for destroying cancer cells. If you know anyone who is researching oncology, or even better, antibody drug conjugates, please let me know and please contact Mr. Zupan. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is, my name is Madison Cruz and I, and my topic is consumer behavior. So when I'm, when, as an adult, I want to open a restaurant and I want to know why people buy certain foods. And I want, so that way my restaurant can be as great as it can. And if you know anyone who does, who does consumer behavior relating to foods in the New York area, please contact Mr. Zupan. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christian Delapi and I'm studying longevity, or factors that influence a longer life in humans. I am very passionate about this subject because of my very wide-aged family and wide-range family. I'm looking for a mentor that will be willing to work with me on any health benefits that are related to a longer person's life. Thank you.
Sorry, that's not me. Anthony actually is in a swim meet currently right now. So Anthony right now, Esposito, is studying athletes and their stress level. So he's looking for, being a three-sport athlete himself, he wants to look at factors that affect athletes and particularly their stress and ways to combat it. So he's looking for anyone dealing with either of those two, or those two categories in conjunction with each other in the New York area. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Olivia Calvis and I'm researching making renewable energy more environmentally safe. Renewable energy is the way of the future and we're hoping to create some that doesn't negatively impact the surrounding ecosystems. I'm looking for a mentor in the immediate area, or ideally Palm Beach, Florida, who are researching the environmental impacts of renewable energy, specifically on marine ecosystems.
Good evening. My name is Michael Hlowiak and I am currently looking for a mentor who is researching protein treatment for cancer. I am mainly looking for researchers that are researching the Fabulin aspect of proteins because it has a lot of potential in the cancer treatment. I'm looking for any mentors that are in the tri-state region or around the area. So if you know any of them, and can you please contact Zupan? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gabriella Lee and I'm interested in researching depression and suicide because it is a very prominent problem in my age group. I am looking for mentors anywhere because I'm going to be most likely doing a survey. I'm looking for mentors in the area of psychology. Have a good evening and thank you.
Dominic is also at the same swim meet. So Dominic Mantilla is studying the effects of authority. So he's looking at the, such things as, you know, why do we follow lines at the airport? And, you know, parent-student dynamic, teacher-student dynamic and parent-child dynamic. So anything dealing with those aspects, he's looking for a mentor. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luke Marinelli and I'm researching artificial intelligence, more specifically recurrent neural networks. I'm passionate about this subject because of the impact it could have on our future. I'm looking for a mentor in the tri-state area. Please contact Mr. Zupan with any candidates. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jacob Nakame and I am currently researching animal behavior as I am very interested in the veterinarian sciences. Currently, I am more focused on the interspecies communication, which is when two species interact with each other, such as songbirds and squirrels. I'm currently looking for a mentor in the tri-state area. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Solis and I am researching genetics to help genetic markers that can be used to create medicine. I'm looking for a mentor. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Michael Whitaker and I'm researching psychology and neuroscience, specifically the effect modern technology like cellphone, cellphones has on the teenage mind. I'm really interested in this because this is something my generation is like dealing with firsthand. We're like the test subjects, I missed. Good night.
So thank you again for your time. And again, if anyone listening or anyone here knows anyone doing any of these topics, very, obviously very, very wide-ranging. But if you remember back from last year, we had students doing sea turtles and love and, and they actually found mentors as far as Australia or Florida. And then as close as, actually in Putnam Valley, we have some local mentors as well. So again, it's an amazing opportunity. So thank you guys again for the opportunity to start this course five years ago. And we hope to have more to talk about in the next couple of months. So thank you.
Jerry, is there a way of putting these, your address, how to reach you and kind of like what they're looking for, like on the website or something so that, because I'm just writing them down, but if anybody's, even if somebody's watching.
Yeah, absolutely. My, I'll just say my email for now, but I'll definitely forward it and I can have like a list of the topics. But my email is just jzupan, so J-Z-U-P-A-N at pvcsd.org. It's also on, my email's on the website. We also have a link to our science research website on there as well, but I'll add that on there. Absolutely, yeah.
So this presentation will be on the website as well. But if you want to create a separate document that lists the topics with your email address?
Absolutely.
Put it on your webpage and then we'll create a link to it to the district homepage.
Yes, thank you, sir. Yeah, definitely will. Thank you.
Any way we can get people, so that's good.
And I just want to say that we do typically have about one sophomore in each group that usually finds a mentor this way. So I, it's maybe like, I don't think anyone out there knows. It's, I always amaze, usually get one email back or one connection. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
And thank you, Ms. Zupan. I always feel more hopeful about the future every time your science research students present.
Alright, so our next presentation will be by Walt and Teresa from KGND and Kevin Sawyer from Triton. This presentation follows back-to-back meetings we had before the start of the board meeting. First, an administrative meeting and then a meeting with our facilities advisory committee, which is members from the community and from the district. And this is going to provide sort of an update in terms of where we are in the project, focusing on some of the more recent bid openings and sort of what we're doing to maximize our potential to be able to award this bid and move forward. So Walt, thanks.
Good to see you all tonight. It's not the first time we're behind the science research group.
No.
I'm so impressed with what they have going on, but I also feel so inadequate.
I'm waiting for the first kids to need someone in architecture because I'm signing you up to be a mentor.
Anxiously writing down every topic, hoping that one of them would say engineering.
I have to know something. Come on.
I'll fill everyone into my secret. I told Ms. Ruff over here that I, no offense to my friends, but I said I need smarter friends. I'm like going through my head if I know anyone who could help these kids be a mentor and I, I'm coming, drawing blanks.
I took some notes, no promises, but see if we can help generate some leads.
That's great.
So thanks for the introduction. We're here to provide an update tonight. We have a couple of items to talk about. Currently, we're in the throes of permitting the capital projects. We're approaching our important bid schedule. We've got some, as Jeremy mentioned, some construction cost estimates to discuss and then, of course, our next steps. So we submitted to SED in October and we entered into the third-party review process. SED is outsourcing some of the technical review to other, to architecture and engineering companies. So we've received the comments on the project in the first week in December. The comments, a happy report, are relatively minor in nature and we're formulating an addendum response to them. And we anticipate having SED approval and a permanent hand by the end of the year, beginning of 2020. At the same time, we've gone through permitting process with the New York State Department of State. They had to get a variance for the construction at the middle school. Sounds scary, but it's an administrative variance relating to some pre-existing non-conforming building areas at the middle. So the middle school was built before the current codes and there's some conditions there that we simply need a variance from the Department of State to do the project. So that's in hand, that's complete. We've also submitted the project to Putnam County Department of Health and Department of Transportation. So the Department of Health reviews the kitchen at the middle school. And the Highway Department, it's a prerequisite to submit all SED projects to the Highway Department. They're taking a closer look at what we're doing for upcoming year. It's the ideal time to get out on, what we call get out on the street. It's a term, slang for bidding. So we do want to talk a little bit about cost. Just some general background, we've seen some recent cost escalation. So we've talked about this previously, but our process involves cost estimates at every phase of our design. And if you remember, and as you know, in a public school project, we do about half a percent worth of the total design to come up with a budget to do the project. And the way we do that is we use historical information in our office. So we look at projects we've already done that are similar in nature, figure out what they've cost and then escalate those costs to the current year. So if we look back at a project that's two years old, we'll apply a certain escalation factor to essentially bring that up to current day prices. We, we use a cost escalation index. It's published, we use one published by Turner Construction. So by taking our historical data, we have a pretty accurate index of what this should cost. Then at every phase of design, so at 30%, 60%, 100%, those are traditionally called schematic design, design development, 100% construction documents, we perform an estimate, Triton performs an estimate, and then we compare that to our budget. And we go through an iterative process to ensure that before we go to the next phase, our design meets the budget. That's, that's the process we have to work to. And we've done that. And if you remember, we made some hard decisions at design development to keep, to stay on budget. We made some modifications to the scope and we proceeded along using that methodology. That's, you know, the only way we can do it. So just a bit of a primer on what goes into an estimate. There are four basic categories. There are the direct costs. So those are the quote-unquote brick and mortar costs. That's what the piece of equipment costs and that's what the labor costs to install. So if you go out and buy some floor, it's what the flooring costs, the mastic and the person to put it in. Then there are general conditions. It sounds very difficult to understand, but what it is are the administrative requirements of the contract. So if a contractor has to attend meetings, has to do paperwork required for technical submittals, provide requisitions, provide insurance, those are all the administrative components that go in above and beyond the brick and mortar. Overhead and profit, that's the cost of doing business for contractors. That's what it costs to keep their offices open, buy vehicles, buy copy machines and then, of course, hopefully make some money. That's the point for them to be in business. And then escalation. So when we do a cost estimate, we're projecting where costs are going to be however long it'll be until we build it. So Turner Construction produces, or publishes a cost index that's national and regionally adjusted for New York. So when we do estimates, we take a 10-year average of what it's been because there is some fluctuation. There were years in around 2008 where it was a negative escalation, so prices were decreasing instead of increasing. And we apply that. So in this case, the, the average is about four and a half percent. We knew that this is a bit of a boom market. It's, you know, economy's going, chugging along, so we made it 6%. So 6% per year cost escalation for, you know, the bottom line of all those costs. So all told, you go from, this is a sample estimate, but a direct cost of $250 a square foot turns into a realized bid day cost of $335 a square foot and that's what it's made of. So very recently, we've seen on our, some of our projects, as well as anecdotally on other projects, some recent spikes in bid results. Now, it's a relatively small sample size, but we see it out there. And we felt obligated to come and talk to you about it and come up with some strategies for mitigating or dealing with that as we go forward. Just kind of the prudent thing to do. So while I want to highlight this, I don't want to be an alarmist. These are not, there's not enough information out there to know for sure what's going to happen, but we certainly are seeing some upward trends in very recent bid results. When I say recent, I'm talking the past eight weeks, six to eight weeks, basically starting in November until now. So Pelham bid a project in the third week in November, had higher than anticipated costs. And when I'm saying higher than anticipated, that project was in the 15% to 18% higher than anticipated. And they went through the same process that we've gone through. Rhineac is a project we're not involved with, but anecdotally, we've heard they had the same experience. And then Scarsdale, again, we're not involved with, but anecdotally, we've heard that. So just based on the project we're, we're involved with, when we get bid results, we meet with the low bidders and at that time, we request what's called a schedule of values. And a schedule of values goes line by line, basically summarizes the big components of work. So there's aluminum for steel, light iron for concrete, aluminum for masonry and so forth. And we compared that to our estimates. And in, in the cases we have, we're privy to that information, we're seeing significant increases in steel, concrete, masonry and windows. For the most part, the steel, concrete and windows all have a pretty significant metal component to it. In some cases, steel, but obviously the windows, aluminum. And then we're also seeing, so there's indicative, we're seeing a trend related to the metal products in the buildings. There are some explanations for it. It could be demand, it could be the contractors think there's a potential big influx of work. There's also a possibility that's related to uncertainties such as tariffs. So even, I think next week, there's going to be a decision made about potential tariffs related to steel imports from Brazil. So those types of things, especially uncertainty, can have consequences related to pricing. So the more risk there is out there, there's a higher potential for, for price increases. The other thing we're seeing are some increases related to general contractor overhead and profit. So what that's telling us is contractors see a lot of work opportunities in front of them. If they thought there was a kind of so, quote-unquote famine market, they would reduce their overhead and profit to secure the work. But we're seeing that they, they believe there's a, a potential long run of work coming forward. So when we look at the direct cost increases, we've graphed a couple of key ones. So masonry, concrete, openings and steel. Those are really on a square foot basis. It's not a unit price per each item. But we went back and essentially took the schedule of values and compared it to our estimates. And what you're seeing is a slight increase over time from the beginning of the design phase. So we start over in the May timeframe and we do estimates at the 30% point, 60% point. And then we did one when we went to SED in September. And the prices crept along and you're seeing the increase. And that is commensurate with the escalation we had assumed was going to happen. It doesn't match exactly, but it's about right. And then when we get to November, it spikes up. And basically what we're reflecting are the bid results that we saw. And I just want to again stress, it's a limited sample size. So this is not statistically significant, but it's anecdotally significant. And how does that impact our overall cost? Well, we graphed the overall cost per square foot for an estimate. And at the bottom, we have like three layers of purple, it looks like a layer cake. Those represent the plumbing, electrical, mechanical trades. And you can see, they're pretty consistent. There's a little uptick, but not a dramatic uptick. What we're seeing are increases in general construction pricing and we believe primarily driven by the increases in concrete, steel, masonry and openings, which are the metal windows. So a little bit, it's something we've got to pay attention to and we felt we needed to come talk to you about. But it's not the end-all be-all. So there are other districts regionally that are having successful bid results. So we've been in touch with Yorktown. They opened bids in December and they got bids within their budget. I don't know the exact scope of their project, but it's promising that their estimates match what they received. We're involved with a project in Middletown. They're able to, they awarded a project yesterday. The project came in slightly higher than budgeted, but it was within an acceptable tolerance. When I say that, a percentage point or two. Brewster, Mount Pleasant had similar experiences. Mount Pleasant did not award their project, but they did receive bids within the budget. So they didn't award for a different reason. But, so it's a little difficult to make heads or tails of this, but we need to be prepared and we need to make some decisions to give us flexibility and prepare for a potential increase. We don't know if it's going to happen for sure, but let's go to our toolbox and take advantage of everything we can. So what can we do? The first thing we've done is internally hired a quality control consultant. So they come in, they reviewed all of our documents for the project, everything that went to SED, went through it with a fine tooth comb, met with Teresa and our team and highlighted anything where there might be ambiguity, a piece of missing technical specification or something that we can clear up. What does that do? Well, first and foremost, it allows the contractors to have confidence when they look at the job and say, these guys know what they're doing, there isn't a mistake, everything is very clear, we know how to go forward. So less risk, hopefully a lower price. It also hopefully takes some pressure off the backend of the project. So if we know initial costs are increasing, what can we do? Well, we can try to reduce any potential contingency spend as we go forward. So trying to eliminate any potential unforeseen condition change orders or nation change orders. At the same time, we did a much deeper dive on asbestos testing for the middle school in particular. So asbestos test was performed by the district consultant. We took a look at it in conjunction with Triton. Teresa, Kevin, David, all ran out there with the consultant, actually started taking the building apart so that we could look at areas that were assumed to be asbestos-contained, confirm whether they were or weren't. So there was no uncertainty. The big one had to do with a potential for vapor barrier behind a brick wall. So literally, these guys went out there, took bricks off the wall and tested it. So we've really tightened up the asbestos component of the project and that historically is an area we all know where unfortunately you find stuff. So it's not, I'm not saying it's going to be perfect, but we've definitely gone to great lengths to, to make it as good as we can get it. So that's one of our tools. Another one is to develop contract formats that are as attractive as possible and most cost-effective for the district. So we want contractors to come in and say, this is, this makes sense, I like the way this is set up, I want to bid it. And we also want to take some bigger components out of play from markup and try to find the right contractors to do the work. So a great example of that would be the middle school window. So we have a pretty large window replacement project there. That's going to be done by a quote-unquote window contractor, even if they're hired by a general contractor. The good news is most of that work happens independently. So it's not tied to other aspects of the project. The windows just get replaced. So by putting that as a separate prime contractor, we think A, we'll attract really good prices from window contractors because they say, hey, I don't have to deal with this GC, this is a great project, I can go do it. They may be able to do some of their work second shift when no one's in the building and get, you know, outside of summer hours, maybe do a classroom at night. So we think that would be a great savings. And it's also over a million dollars worth of work, so it avoids all those below-the-line markups we saw that could happen from a general contractor. So two things, creates interest and also hopefully saves some money. So we're looking at different strategies with the contract, contracts. And that may involve options to combine contracts, let's say, on the middle school, high school campus. So maybe we get one GC who does all the work here and one electrical contractor who does all the work. We're developing options and also talking to contractors. So almost as important as getting the right scope is getting the right bid solicited. So we're reaching out to contractors, finding local qualified contractors who say, hey, this is my backyard. There are a lot of contractors that live in this part of the world, so we want to get them interested. We want to make them aware of the project. So we're starting to be proactive, meet with them, call them, get them interested. And then there are some specialty components. We talked about the windows, the pre-engineered building structure for the wellness center. So we're identifying contractors that may be interested in that and getting them, making them aware of the project. At the same time, we're telling them how great you guys ought to work with and trying to get them to come out here, which I'm very happy to say because it's true. So the third tool on our tool chest, let's find ways to deliver the same design for less money. This, in our view, is value engineering. We're not cutting a scope, we're just making things more cost-effective. So we're going to show you some renderings of potential ways to trim ceiling finishes, wall finishes, talk about exterior wall configurations. And then look at some items like kitchen equipment. We may be able to look at the specifications for equipment, give ourselves some options there and then look at, at cost-effective lighting. And inevitably, one thing that happens during bidding is the lighting warehousees will issue an alternate spec lighting package at the last second. And contractors will include it. So we're going to get in front of that and find the most cost-effective lights that basically look the same or give us the same feeling at the end of the day. So Teresa and our team have, have prepared a couple of renderings for you. If you remember, this is looking into the middle school cafeteria. We're seeing a very nice felt ceiling and some nice wood wall, wood look wall paneling. We're proposing as a simple cost savings measure to swap the felt for acoustic ceiling tile, not dissimilar to the type of ceiling that's in here, and reduce some of the wood paneling. So we still have a very hand- So we still have a very handsome look to the space, a very exciting look, but it's actually a pretty significant cost savings. And one thing I would point out is, on the right side of this image, you'll see we reduced the paneling to about half height. We've always talked about that wall being a home for a monitor. So get a digital display that would have menu items, upcoming events, it'll actually work out to be a very nice area for that, that display. And then looking from the other side of the room, again, we've actually taken some of the paneling out. It's hard to distinguish if I don't flip back and forth very quickly, but you see some pan, that wall in the distance, and we see a little bit of reduction around the percentium of the stage opening. So, again, very, a very minimal change to the design, but actually, these carry some pretty significant cost savings with them. At the wellness center, we're taking a hard look at this building. This building is the piece of the project that's most subject to the dynamic market changes we're talking about. So this is the part of the project that has the most steel, the most concrete, the most wall construction, and actually, outside of the middle school, the most windows. So, we're looking primarily at the exterior envelope here and finding ways to make this more cost effective. So, one of the things we've analyzed is that the cowl windows, which are polycarbonate windows, they're actually going to be kind of milk glass looking, they won't be totally clear, but they do provide us natural light, are pretty expensive. They carry a significant premium within the pre-engineered building fabric. So we're looking at ways to reduce the amount of those, but still have the same effect. So, there are windows up above the brick in this image and then windows at the end, cowl windows. And we're proposing to not eliminate them, just reduce the square footage of those windows in each location. So from the inside, we see the windows at the edge of the roof and then the end wall. And we're going to keep windows basically in the same place, but just reduce the size and configuration of them. So, still introducing natural light, but just scaling back a little bit on those components. And that little scale back actually results in a pretty significant savings. The other piece of the exterior wall is the base masonry wrapper, so to speak, at the bottom 14 feet. We have a CMU block on the inside and then a brick veneer on the outside. So, our design as of a month ago included an eight inch thick block, insulation, an air cavity, and then a full thickness, four inch wide brick. That's a, that's a typical construction. What we're looking at now is, our engineers have informed us, we can reduce to a six inch thick block. And then we're looking at a thinner masonry veneer, which would be attached directly to the insulation system. So, there is a reduction in masonry cost, in just the material thickness change, but more importantly, this allows us to reduce the foundation wall thickness. So we're going to scale back the amount of concrete we have to put in the building. We go from something that's 16 inches thick to maybe some, a wall maybe is around 10 inches thick. So, when we're looking at significant increases, potential increases in concrete, this is a way that we can, we can fight that off and still deliver a building that looks like it matches the rest of the facility and fits in with your campus. Because you know, that's a critical part of this building. You can't look like a spaceship landed next to your high school. So it's important for us to keep the masonry veneer on there and at the same time, find ways to save money on, on the building itself. So, I think the final piece in our tool chest is to look at bid alternates. So, bid alternates means that we would identify pieces of the scope of work that could be priced separately. And simply, what that does is it allows you to maximize the amount of work you can award on a bid day, so that you don't end up with a binary bid result. So that's either under or above your budget. We get, we find a way to get all the way up to your budget and award as much work as possible. Our intent all on this project is to deliver the best possible project we can deliver for your budget. And that's what our, our cost control process does. And the final tool there is to, to find areas that we could price separately and either defer the work or potentially consider to not do them as part of the, the overall contract. But that gives you the flexibility to award a project and stand the schedule. So, the wellness center is not so dependent on when you start, but certainly the work at the middle school and even the elementary school. There are seasons that you can do that work. So, we want to get to a position in February where we can commence the critical path schedule work. And then if we need to do something different with the alternates, reconsider them, redesign them, we can do that as we go forward. But, this process of dealing with uncertainty and costs requires us to take advantage of everything in our arsenal to deliver the best possible project and manage cost. So, I'll say what I said at the beginning, this isn't a promise that costs are going to be increased. We just felt compelled to share the information we were seeing and, and develop a strategy to get in front of it as best we can. So we think combined with all these, all these, these approaches is going to be our best effort to, to try to manage the costs as they, as we see them coming into the new year. So, next steps, we're going to get through SCD. That's basically in our core to provide a response. We're going to finalize the construction documents. We're going to work as hard as we possibly can to get people interested in these projects, tell them how great you are, tell them what a wonderful place this is to work, and then go out and get some actual bids and, and go from there. I talked a lot and I didn't let Teresa or Kevin talk. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I have a few questions. Do we, are we thinking that because work seems to be so plentiful that, or, or not even that, maybe the uncertainty plays more of a part in the bidding process, that people who are going to be actually bidding on it, they don't know what they're going to end up paying? So they're just creating their cushion for their uncertainty. But also, I wonder if you have the sense, when you showed the different school districts, I noticed the first one where they were outside of the, the first slide when they were outside of your projected 6%. Those seem to be Scarsdale and Ry Brook and they're going to pay what they're going to pay if they got the money to do it there, you know, they, they got the very demanding constituencies, as opposed to the Yorktowns and the Brewsters. Do you think that plays into it a little bit?
We've talked about it a little bit. The, the factor that may be in play is that there's a perception that those, those projects carry a premium for a contractor to do the work. That's a possibility, can't say for sure. You know, we were not involved in a few of those projects. What I can tell you is, the work in Pelham is being rebid with a more advantageous contract structure and we hope that that alone results in some pretty significant savings. So, that's a concern and it's definitely something to pay attention to. There are many regions to the economy here, for sure, and contractors have a different perception of what's expected, what's demanded, and how easy or difficult it will be to work somewhere. There are, there are reputational factors that are going to play too, so.
And when you go out for bid, when we were talking about the, the, looking at the alterations as far as either a different type of outer wall, less windows, and the different, in the middle school, the less wood and not the felt ceiling, things like that, are that, is that the plan forward? Is that what the plan forward is, is to, to project that upfront or is that a fallback?
The plan right now, so, none of this is final at this moment, but the plan right now would be to make some of those changes, go forward with them. I, I really hope I can come back in February and say, sorry about all that stuff I said in, in December, we got really good, really good bid results and we can, we can put some stuff back if you like. I just don't think that's going to be the case, but in the event you wanted to add something back, we can add it back. That's really what change orders are for.
So you would, you're, you're thinking the new default would be the more minimalized?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a prudent recommendation at this point, just really based on what we're seeing. And again, I stress, it's a small sample size, but we feel compelled to react to it. It would be foolhardy to just keep going forward and not take some strategy to mitigate what, what the market's selling us.
And my question is related in terms of the, the original design with the enhanced windows, was more in keeping with what we already have in this building? Was that the purpose for some of the enhancements? I would definitely want to go ahead with the changes regardless. I find myself as the speaker, as speaker of the taxpayer, why don't we go lower then? So I'm assuming it's because we were really matching what we had and, and now we're, we're under a different place than we were when the building here was under.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we've worked very hard to take a building and try to make it look as familiar as possible to the campus, so it looks like it's part of the campus infrastructures, it looks the same. And yes, this building has some really great windows and, and natural daylight is an important part of this design and important part of the student experience in this building. As, you know, when you contrast that to some other buildings, it's, it's different. Having said that, that building will still have a great deal of natural light entering into it. Control of daylight is important in PE spaces. So, as much as we like getting natural light in there, this reduces some risk for overexposure. You know, what we do want to avoid are hotspots in the room and by reducing the windows, we can control that a little easier. And it doesn't impact the lighting systems in the room, they remain the same. We're designing the lights to work at night, so we're, the sun is off.
I think a lot of those design decisions come about from meetings with our advisory committees and our user groups and obviously, there was interest in getting more natural light into that space, so it didn't seem like a big urn. And that's where, in the design phase, those came up, but obviously, we can't do everything all the time. So, it was sort of, those were prioritized as maybe not being the most important piece, where I'm willing to take windows out, I'm not willing to remove the brick on the outside, right? Less windows, people may not notice, still natural light, plenty bright in there. To remove the brick, now it looks like you have this structure that doesn't belong on the campus next to the high school. So, but we obviously weigh all of these design decisions and decide what we think we're willing to do without. There's always like this, this time period, so if Walt comes to me and says, hey, we got, we got to cut some stuff, I'm like, I'm not cutting anything. And it takes me like a good 48 hours to be like, fine, what can we cut? So, to go through that process, it's hard. I mean, you, you're so invested in these projects and the decisions that were made months ago, the, the thought of letting anything go feels like it shouldn't happen, but the reality is, is we have to react to the market. So we're trying to be as reactive as we can without overreacting and decimating our project. And we're going to have to go out and see what the market will bear. And if what we cut now, if, if, if we end up falling in that first bucket of schools that came in 30% over budget, well, we got some serious decisions to make and we're going to go back to the drawing table. But maybe we come in close, we come on budget for some, we can award piecemeal and wait and see what happens down the road. So I think that's our hope.
So no, we're still, no pool?
Joseph.
Unless we save a lot of money on other parts of the project.
The projects that came in within budget, what type of scope of those projects compared to ours?
It's a good question. So I can only speak to one of them and that was a, it was about a $10 million project which included an addition and renovation. So, I mean, overall scale, not dissimilar to what we're talking about at the middle school. You know, that's 40% more or something like that, but that included all trades, all types of work. I can't speak to the other ones, I just don't know enough about them.
Thank you.
I believe the Yorktown project was more of an infrastructure related project without new building footprint, more renovation.
Well, and I think it's important to remind people, because this comes up, this came up when we were first presenting this project about cost overruns and, you know, they've heard, you know, the state is building a road, all of a sudden, it's twice the cost, that we can't go over the amount of money that, that the taxpayers allocated. So, the only thing we can do is, is try to use all of these options to try to minimize the, the costs. So our, our first step is to do all of these, get in front of projects. Make us marketable, try to take as much of the insecurity, like asbestos and those hidden things that happen anytime you do any kind of renovation. Then we go to bid, well, we get the approval in January, go to bid in about February, and then we talk again. Is that more or less where we're at?
Then we'll be back, yes. Hopefully it'll be good news.
And there, so there, being as Pollyanna like as possible, everything we did brings us to within that safe 6%, 5% window. If it doesn't, we do have conversation about where we go forward in terms of the project.
Yeah, and the concept, based on the way it's structured, you'll have some options.
So it's incredibly likely that we'll have, I shouldn't say many multiple, but multiple subcontractors, or I won't even use the word subcontract, separate contracts for separate parts of the job, as opposed to just having one master contract for the entire thing?
Correct. I don't know, Kev, you want to talk about it a little bit, but we've talked about some strategies to, to break it apart.
So under, under the Wicks Law, there are certain requirements for how many prime contractors you have to have. The minimum amount of prime contractors that you can have is actually plumbing, mechanical, and electrical contractors. And oftentimes, there's a general contractor to pick up all the loose ends. In this particular case, we're looking at a number of other prime contractors as well. We were looking at a prime contractor for windows. I think that's a simple one to separate out surgically and, and realize a better cost for that. And then we're using some other techniques on things like the synthetic turf, where we might pre-purchase or purchase that through another cooperative state contract internally through the district and that alleviates contractor overhead for those types of things. So, we're looking at many, many different ways to evaluate the projects to realize the best cost savings for each part of it. But we, we will have a minimum of six prime contract, four, five prime contractors. We could potentially, depending on if we break them out as individual contracts, we could have as much as 13. So it'll just, we, we, what we want to do as part of that process is we want to give the school district as many options as possible so that you can realize your base program. And then whatever savings that you realize through that, you can incorporate alternates or owner-driven change orders to maximize the, the total cost of your, of your bond. The important thing, as, as Walter had mentioned, is that for the middle school, it's really important that that project happen this spring and going into the summer. We realize that that's a driving force here. So we also are just making the contracts more clear about that as well. There may be some portions of it that we might push to another summer, simply because it's just easier for us to do later. And, and you might, again, as you go through this project, you might realize savings in the construction contingencies. And so that might be another pot of money that you find, that you might be able to spend a few things. So as you go along and more opportunities arise, we want to give the board and the school district more options to realize all those things and maybe more, who knows? But I do believe that we're taking a very good approach to this issue and trying to be upfront with this district as well as others about the potential of what's coming in the next spring.
It's counterintuitive to think that more contract, more prime contractors could be less money, but I think your explanation, if it's somebody who specializes in windows, that's what they do and they know how to get the, the best price for that area.
Exactly right. That's what we're hoping to do is, is, and if we feel that there's a way to break out other forms or other contracts, we're going to do it, to maximize and realize the best savings for the district.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody?
Well, it certainly wasn't as exciting or as concise as the science research group. Thank you for having us.
Unfortunately, I understood everything you said. I'm sorry, I can't say that about the science research.
I do have one more question, I'm sorry. The facility, you had a facilities meeting prior to this? Any topics that they brought up that we need to be aware of or about the project?
No, there were some really good questions about other, other ideas like pre-purchasing equipment and materials, which, you know, the, the answer to that is, we always incentivize contractors, recommend that the contract includes a clause that allows us to pay them or the district to pay them for any materials that are shipped to the site and properly stored. So, sooner, as soon as they buy something and get it here, we're willing to pay them for it on a requisition, which incentivizes them to buy it out early. So, we would not recommend the district purchasing any equipment or materials outside of some specific items like the turf. So we would not recommend the district purchasing any equipment or materials outside of some specific items like the turf. But as soon as contractors get it here, we're going to incentivize them to buy it, get it here and hopefully reduce some of the, the risk that it could be out there. I don't know. Do you guys remember anything else that came up?
I think part of it is, right, we went through this presentation and actually tweaked some of the pieces. And there was conversations about what about this, what about that, maybe we should include this. So part of it was sort of a dry run through this presentation to make sure they were on board. There was definitely questions about timing and materials and pre-purchasing and, and how the project was being broken apart. And then at the end, it was really just sort of, this is an unscheduled, this wasn't a presentation we were planning on offering. And then there was just sort of a, I guess, a mention of that, that they appreciated the transparency. That this is something that is, is raising some alarms and, and that we thought it was important enough to share with the board. And if we were going to share with the board, we thought it was right to first involve our advisory committee. So they got a first look at it. And that's what sort of brought us here. So the feedback, I think, was informative and, and pretty positive.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not a great bit of news to share with anybody, but we felt it was important to come here and talk about it. So thanks for having us.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So Dr. Luft, you shaved your head so nobody knows this job is turning you gray.
Yeah. It's a good thing I don't have any hair left to lose.
No, no. Well, to me, that's on everyone.
Yep. All right, Jill, make me happy, Jill.
Yeah.
Wishful thinking. All right, our next presentation will be, Jill Figarela is going to give us, uh, believe it or not, we are already in the budget season for the 2020, 2021 school year. Sounds scary to even say it.
Didn't we just finish introductions of the opening last week?
Pretty much. Um, so what Jill's prepared here is sort of a multi-year financial plan. And I know over the next couple of meetings, we'll hear a lot about budget, both from Jill as well as our building and department administrators. So we're going to give Jill the opportunity to kick it off here. So thank you.
Good evening. Um, yeah, so on following the proactive and safe conversation about forecasting and, and looking towards um, what we need to look at as we plan budgets going forward. You know, I prepared this, this presentation. So, you know, just a quick financial planning process everybody goes through. You identify your priorities and objectives. You gather, you know, we put together our information, we analyze it. We make proposals and recommendations. We take action on those. And then we keep track of them as we're going and make sure that we're staying on that track so that our forecasts can be as close as they, um, they can be and not prop up a lot of surprises along the way. So came up with some questions that I think as we look at a budget and a financial plan that we need to make sure we're able to answer. And uh, the first one being that is the budget providing the best quality of education we can within our means by aligning the budget with our educational initiatives, right? So that's our first goal when we're developing, we're thinking about a budget. And does the budget provide a safe and secure student learning environment? Does the budget provide for professional development for both the teaching staff and the support staff? So that we can all be on the same page and, and understand what each other is trying to accomplish. And does the budget meet state mandates and remain under the tax cap at the same time? So I think that's, that's the toughest one because all of those things um, put together are going to make for a good budget. But if we can't stay within our means, it's, it's going to be a problem. So um, New York State has written the tax cap into law now. And of course they're creating new mandates all the time. They're not always providing aid for those mandates. And, but we still need to incorporate them into our, into our budgets. And of course, um, a lot of times it makes us have to dig into our fund balances, our reserves and bring those down to a lower level than we had hoped that they would be at. So we use our um, decision-making to make, you know, long-term, uh, talk about long-term priorities and district goals. So when we're updating our financial plan, that's what we have to think about, right? We have to allow for, this, this allows for us to do some smart budgeting, um, use appropriate reserve levels and make sure we either replenish them or, you know, know what we're using in the budget. So that we either know we have enough, we're going to have enough to move forward by using them and replenishing them. Are they one-time things? Are they going to be ongoing and have to be taken from those reserves every year? It also lets us um, make our projections more um, you know, it helps us make the projections for our general operating expenses and revenues more on target. They also help us to plan in advance for our biggest types of expenses, which are instructional salaries and staffing, our healthcare costs, our pension costs and our capital infrastructure. Those are our biggest ticket items in the budget. So what are we doing? We, our goal is to find a balance again to support the district's educational vision. So we try to weigh those benefits and costs and um, try to keep a, an equal amount of both. So it helps us also predict sustainability for existing programs or the development, what do we want to do in the future? What do we want to bring in as initiatives for programs for students? Are we going to have potential shortfalls? Or do we have enough revenue streams that are going to be able to cover those things? And if not, where, where do we plan on getting that from? Are we going to be able to apply for grants? Are we going to be, are we going to lose grants? Are we going to get more state aid? How is that going to happen? So when I did the um, the financial forecast, which is a spreadsheet made up of many, many columns, I applied these following assumptions, okay, to not show this tight, this great, this great um, spreadsheet on a small screen. I wanted to explain how I came to these conclusions. So um, I used a tax levy change of, of 2%. Seems to be um, you know, where we are able to um, land when we do our calculation for that tax cap every year is at about 2% of our prior year's tax cap, um, which for us is in somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000. A state aid increase on average, I figured up about $250,000. Right now, our health insurance rate increases seem to be averaging about 3%. Our teacher and C S E A pension, pension contributions for salaries averaging over um, the years about .75% per year. Our social security taxes, that's just about the only stable percentage that I, that I could apply, which is 7.65 and hasn't changed. I should keep my fingers crossed. And salary changes are in line with the bargaining unit contracts. So estimating on those as well. So the results in a budget to budget change over 11 years, so I looked at three before, which were, are, were already completed. And eight, going out over eight years into the future, um, so a period of 11 years, we would be averaging about a 1.8% um, budget to budget increase or a total of 19 and a half percent. If we can keep our budgets at 1.8%, I would say that that's, that's pretty good. Um, it's pretty low. I don't know that we can do that and maintain our programs, but I'm, you know, if we, if, if we are able to maintain some of those assumptions, we would be. We would be in that ballpark. However, um, 31% of our district reserves have been used over the past three years to do that, to stay under that cap and to maintain the programs that we have. And um, the unfortunate thing is that the remaining available reserves would be depleted over the next eight years if we were to just have those assumptions reached, which are, those are minimum assumptions. Those are not adding programs. Those are not adding staff. Those are not adding other mandates that the state is going to put upon school districts. So as the tax cap restraints start to shrink our fund balance reserves, we need to start thinking differently. And how do we do that? So I don't have the answers to those things, but these are certainly hard questions. And they're things that we look at when we think about maintaining our fiscal solvency. And all of the following are things that we do look at while we're preparing the budget. Any programmatic changes, class size, enrollment, staff, um, different um, changes in program schedules that could help us save um, sections or periods of, of any type of, you know, um, a subject that we'll be able to reduce or increase our um, class sizes so that they're ideal for, you know, to fit into the budget and the staffing that we have. And also renegotiating vendor contracts, taking a look at what we're, we're paying vendors and how can we do better? So maintaining adequate reserves can, they can be unique to each school district. So there may be different needs at different school districts. Some things to consider are possible state aid cuts on the horizon, uh, possible cuts in federal grants, possible impact on districts' bond ratings, which, so that our bond ratings are affected very much so by our reserves. So every time we go out for borrowing, and especially now with this project, this would be unique to us right now, correct? Like we have this on the horizon, is this project coming up? And it's very important that our bond ratings stay. We are, I think, a double A rating right now. That significantly can change the cost of the money that we're borrowing. So down the road in over 30 years, when we're paying off that bond, that, that could make a big difference. So if we, if we change the status of our reserves, we can change the status of our rating. New economic realities come up all the time. We talked about them just now with the project. There are unexpected changes in costs for certain things and we have to realize those. We have no way around it. Ability to protect the taxpayers' investment in education. So those are things we need to consider. You know, when we are thinking about our reserves and just using them because that is the taxpayers' dollars. They are an investment in education and they expect to be used in a certain way. And we need to maintain a certain level of solvency in order to um, you know, provide things for the future. So keeping an eye on current level of finances and focusing on how to get to our desired state. I, I wanted this to be able to kick off the budget season with this conversation. I think in January, we'll have, coming up at the next meeting, some budget presentations. And these are things that we need to keep in the back of our mind while we are, um, you know, making plans for the new budget for the new year and down the road. So I, you know, I um, I did provide the spreadsheet with all the detailed information to the board. I can certainly have something like that, you know, with more uh, information posted on our website. But it was impossible to show that entirely tonight. I just wanted to give you an idea of, of what that looks like and how your fund balance and your reserves can, even though we're, we're incorporating the, incorporating them into the budget every year, you know, we're using them. And they're just, you know, they're, they're slowly, they're slowly depleting and we're not repli, we're not able to replace them. And the, the tax cap is, is kind of forcing us into that state. So, does anybody have any questions?
In the assumptions and the calculations, um, is there a projection based on that eight-year time period retirements and replacements of those retirements?
For personnel?
Yeah, because I'm imagining, you know, since so many people were hired in the year 2000, in eight years, we might have, you know.
We have such a large number of staff that are not eligible for retirement. There are very few bodies that will be eligible for retirement over the next few years. I don't have that number handy, but I can certainly put it together, maybe Dr. Luft.
But we wouldn't really anticipate any significant change in that.
No, nothing coming up soon.
That large cohort, right, yeah, that large cohort that was hired when the high school was built is really.
18 years now.
Yeah, not, not that much, but 12, the 14 would be my guess for vast majority of them. Maybe a couple sooner, a couple later, but it's not like we're looking at, but we, we'll have a couple along the way. And we didn't figure that in because those aren't really known costs.
Right.
But uh, nothing substantial.
I would say, um, Dr. Luft, your, your instructions to our administrators in looking at the budget. We've, and Jill, I'm going to start with a commendation to you and your staff. Over the last five years, while we've come in with fairly low budget to budget increases, we have managed to do that while making significant enhancements to our program.
That's correct.
Science research is just one. Mandarin, um, we've maintained, we've increased a lot of the offerings. We've maintained programs and enhanced them. I think, and we did it in a very short time under both Dr. Willis and Dr. Luft's stewardship. I think we have to um, basically make our administrators realize that at this point we want to get the gains from those enhancements. And I don't see a great deal of new enhancements, if any, um, moving forward for quite some time because we've made so many in such a short time. And also, we can't take anything for granted. And the reason I think I'm hesitating is um, a lot of times when people do budgets, how can I maintain what we have? And I think we have to look, what can we afford and what don't I need? We do have a couple hundred less students than we did 10 years ago. We really have to look at, in each building. So we really have to look at that and look at what do we need? We want to, we, I don't want to touch the quality of the programs that we provide, but we can afford class sizes of 14, um, classes offering with only nine or 10 in it. We have to really look at what do, what do we need and what has to happen. So.
Right.
That's not for you so much as you.
Right, no. I, I mean, I think that's our, certainly our, our goal, right? We want to find ways to create efficiencies that don't directly impact our program. And I hope last year, throughout the development of the budget last year, we realized there were some significant reductions in sections and staff and positions that we didn't fill for a variety of reasons, but certainly less staff members this year than last. And I think as those opportunities arise and we can make smart, informed decisions about class size and number of sections at grade levels where appropriate, um, without it really directly impacting our instructional program, those are our opportunities. And the hope is that those, those opportunities to reduce staff through attrition and other things like that provide us some extra, extend out that eight years, a couple bit, I mean, a couple more years. And we hope we, we don't get to the point where we're forced with the decision. And I think it's a reality for every school district in this area. Maybe whether it's one, two, or 10 years down the law, down the line, every school district in this area is going to be sitting at a board table having a conversation. Do we, do we cut programs or do we exceed the cap? It's, it's not a sustainable level. There's not a district in this area that can sustain it. Everybody's eating away at their reserves, depending upon where they started. That buys them more time or less. But I think everyone in the area will eventually be having the conversation, programs or super majority. And, and we obviously want to hold off on that conversation for as long as possible. But I think the reality is it'll happen one day here too.
Right. And again, just like the conversation we had with the architects, it's, it's a proactive conversation. It's a conversation we need to have about how, you know, it just, we want to continue on like we are. But um, there's realities that are down in front of us. And if we don't take a hard look at what we're doing and try to be as um, proactive as possible in, in keeping those programs and, and, and costs um, as tight as possible, that we're going to run out of that time a lot sooner than we'd like to. But anybody who has questions, um, you know, at home or in the community, obviously reach out to me. I'd like to address, um, or help anybody understand if they don't understand, um, some of the conversation that we're having. You know, help them understand what budgeting and what um, school districts are facing for mandates and things like that. To contact me, I'm always available in the business office for questions.
We'll be hearing a lot from you in the next couple of months.
Yeah, we have, um, we'll be adopting the budget timeline tonight. And it'll give us an idea of who is going to be presenting on what nights and leading right up through um, April when we adopt the budget.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've heard from our students. Your superintendent report?
All right, we're going to try to bring it back up a little bit here.
That would be lovely.
So I guess really the whole first part of my report.
So, I guess really the whole first part of my report is recognizing that we are in the performance season. Started off with a kindergarten show, which is always a highlight, once you get over the first ten minutes, fifteen, twenty, actually, it's the entire time the parents are standing and waving, trying to get their child's attention. So that, that pretty much occurs to the entire performance. But it's, it's so exciting to see the kids looking for their parents, more important, the parents looking for their kids. I've picked up all kinds of strategies. Parents are now using their cell phones to signal their children. In fact, I saw for the first time ever, the parent had a different color light on their phone.
Are we doing Morse code to the children?
Yeah, we may be there soon, as a way to signal their children, when they look out in the stand, you see a green light, like, that green light is me, I'm here for real.
There is an app, if you go like this, it will actually do words, so it's scary.
That's cool. So it's, I was taking notes for my next child, for my, my next child's performance, so... So kindergarten show, always amazing. I, I attended the gratitude festival for the first time, and in full disclosure, there was another event I planned on attending that evening, and I was gonna stop by real fast. First, I had to walk twenty minutes down Piscopo Hollow Road in the pitch black, 'cause I parked at the firehouse, which is the closest parking space I could find. And I found myself squeezed in the back corner next to a mixing board, and I was gonna stay for a couple performances and leave, and I found myself trapped. No, not trapped by people, trapped by myself. I couldn't make myself leave, and the next performance is starting, I'm like, all right, this is the last one, right after this one, I'm gonna run over to the next event, and then the next one's, oh, I really want to see this one. And I ended up staying for the entire thing. I, I don't know if I've ever been as impressed with a group of students coming together, planning something, and being able to do that on their own. It, it was a tremendous experience, there was former students there, obviously, current students, former students were performing with current students, teachers were up there performing. It, it was just a fantastic event. I would encourage anyone who's never been to attend, just not all at once, 'cause you won't fit. But it, it was, it was really, it was a great deal of gratitude that I had, being there and witnessing, so it was really something special. I had recently attended the fifth and sixth grade concert, and I brought my fifth grade son, who was very excited to see it. I could not believe the number of students that participate in our fifth and sixth grade chorus, and then they asked at one point the students to raise their hand if they're also in band. Wow. Like, there was a ton of kids that are doing both the chorus and band in the middle school, it was super impressive, the place was packed. And my fifth grade son, who has been in the chorus in his elementary school, was like, wow. Like, he couldn't believe how many students participated, and I don't think they get the same level of, of students participating in, in his school, so it was very impressive. There was a first grade concert today as well, so, and even more coming, I know the middle school band concerts are coming up, I know Tempermentals recently been performing, and they'll be continuing throughout the holiday season, so if you haven't been out to see one, I would encourage everyone to get out and check out one of these performances. We also had the World Language Honor Society induction. I know that the food bank, over Thanksgiving time, had served over two hundred meals, and this is something that really has hit home for me recently, being here on the campus on Saturdays for, for youth basketball, it is, it is a tremendously humbling sight to see the line of cars that stretch past the high school, past the middle school, wrap around by the turf. It's just, it's a very humbling experience. So I, I can't thank everyone who's involved in the food bank enough for the service they provide. I don't know how far and wide people are coming from to take advantage of it, but I'm sure it's both. So I just wanted to acknowledge anyone who volunteers, participates at the food bank, 'cause they are doing a tremendous service for this community, and certainly neighboring communities as well. I attended the PTA Holiday Reads and Boutique. If I had known when I was in store for it beforehand, I would've left my credit card at home. The boutique was not a couple people selling, like, plastic toys, which is the way I remember it as a child. There was people that were selling legitimate crafts, homemade, it was amazing. I went through the fair three times, first by myself, then with my wife, that was a mistake, and then again with my wife and my in-laws. So we bought lots of stuff, the, the, my, maybe my guilty pleasure was the Bark Station, where they were selling the candy, I don't even know what it's made of, but it tastes amazing. So just a compliment to PTA, I know Megan Boyle was really involved with organizing the boutique, and it is a nod, if you've ever participated in the Holiday Boutique in Putnam Valley, it's not what you participated in. This is like a legitimate, you can get all your Christmas shopping done at one opportunity. So it's obviously passed through this year, but if they're able to pull that together again with that level of involvement from vendors, I would certainly encourage anyone available to attend. I sit on the Leirik Advisory Committee, we recently had a meeting. They, like a school district, public school districts around the state are dealing with many of the same constraints, we talk a lot about budgeting and personnel, and ways that we can provide a greater level of support without increasing expenses, so that's always an interesting opportunity. The real focus recently is on the Ed Law 2D, which governs student privacy and cybersecurity. These are all regulations and laws that are unfolding now, of course, none of them are, come up with aid or support. So they're things that we're obviously aware of, and we're continuing to work towards, but important, also very expensive, unfunded mandates that we're trying to comply with. And then I do want to recognize our NISMAll Area State Wrap-Up. So we had nine vocal and instrumental students successfully perform at the 2019 NISMAll Area All-State Festival, held at Hudson High School in New York. The highlight of the, of the performance was the fact that the bus broke down on the way up there, I can promise you that. But the students who were selected, or were actually selected based upon their performance at the 2018 NISMAll Solo Festival, so I'll, I'll spare the students of reading all of their names, but we couldn't be more proud of our student performers. As we mentioned, budget discussions have already begun, I've begun meeting individually with building principals and department heads, sort of informal conversations in terms of, as we approach the budget process, this is, what are you looking for, this is what I'm looking for, as they, now they're completing their more formal budget request documents, and it's something that I intend on being very involved in, being my first year as superintendent, and getting a better feel in terms of budgeting here in Putnam Valley, and looking for ways in which we can create some efficiencies. We had a very exciting call with the Putnam County Department of Elections?
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections, who informed us they are no longer providing us the voting machines for our school budget vote, because it's too close to the primary vote. So again, this is, we're exploring options, all of them will obviously cost money, for ways, they suggested we do paper ballots. I thought in 2019, that probably was not the best course of action to keep, to count paper ballots.
2020.
It'll be 2020, that's correct. So we're exploring options, we're contacting vendors, we were on a conference call with the other superintendents, business officials, and district clerks from around Putnam County. They heard us loud and clear, we were not real happy about this decision, and we were looking for ways in which we can help them support us, right? So if they need space, if they need people, if they need, we're willing to partner and do whatever we can to make this happen, but the thought of counting thousands of paper ballots in 2020 did not sound like a great idea. So those conversations will continue, and I'll certainly provide updates, but we're looking for options on how to best move forward.
Can we hear about the gratitude festival again?
You wanna go back there? I have something to do. So this one is just sort of a teaser for something that's coming up. We, we recently held a meeting, and it's just something that's been going around for a couple of years now, about the creation of a Hall of Fame here in Putnam Valley. So we sort of had a pre-planning meeting, and we made a decision to sort of reach out, and we're gonna form this committee that'll really form the structure of what it'll be, who will be involved, how decisions will be made, what the application process will look like. There'll be an opportunity, we've already collected some examples from around the area, and obviously, the members of this committee will have the opportunity to also collect examples, and then to really decide and build the framework for something that's gonna work here in Putnam Valley. So I encourage everyone to stay tuned, and outreach invite is gonna go out in the near future, and if anyone's interested in getting involved, they would certainly have the opportunity to do so. And then the last piece is, obviously, the facilities project continues to move forward, where we maybe had a little bit of a scare, we're trying to correct the best we can, and we're, and we're gonna continue to move forward and hope for the best, and hope we have some successful bid opening, and that we maintain our timeline. And in the event we don't, we will do everything we can to, to get back on track and make sure that we keep the public informed throughout that process, so that's our plan moving forward. Thank you.
Question, so the Board of Elections, that impacts all of the districts, correct? All the...
Actually statewide.
Okay.
Westchester hasn't confirmed whether or not they'll support the Westchester districts, but Dutchess and Putnam can't, this year. Every four years, they said it'll be a problem.
Thank you. Okay. You mean, so it may not be next year?
May not be.
It's just that the two elections come together.
Right.
Yeah, it was a combination of early voting, and the, the primary, I guess, is a week later than it's been in the past, so we're gonna have to...
Right, because the irrelevant presidential primary being New York. I mean, seriously, everything's decided by them. That's okay.
Okay, let's move on. It's time to ask for PTA, PTSA.
We have another question.
Could you give, Marie, the nine students' names to put in the minutes?
I haven't.
Oh, you already have, okay, thank you.
Okay. And there's nobody from the PTA, PTSA, I want to...
No, but could you, and I can't find the email now, but I know that the PTSA, is the thing's at Barnes and Nobles?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
From five to nine.
So if you buy a book, some of the money goes to the PTSA? And I think our students are performing, I think there are groups of singers and musicians, so between five and seven tomorrow night, right? Five and nine?
It is a great event, I've been there a number of times over the years.
It is, they wrap your books for you, it's great.
It doesn't have to be a book, 'cause some people are...
Doesn't have to be a book.
They sell all kinds of things at the Barnes and Noble, so if you're afraid of books, there are toys and games and posters and calendars.
Nobody in Putnam Valley is afraid of books, music.
Put him in Barnes and Noble.
Well, some people just are, are used to do, either doing the library or doing an ebook, and if they want to go to Barnes and Noble and support PTSA, they can do that by any purchase, that's all I'm saying.
Including Starbucks coffee.
I'm gonna pitch the idea of a simple gift-wrapping fundraiser, 'cause I would be happy to bring gifts and pay to have them wrapped.
You have a lot of things you have to have wrapped from this past week.
Exactly. So if any group wants to put that together, I would be happy to be the first person to pay to have my gifts wrapped.
That might be a good idea for them for next year, as a fundraiser, to have people wrapping the gifts that you buy?
That's fun.
You know what I mean? Have a table for wrapping, anything.
Are the cheerleaders still trying to raise money for their trip?
This is it.
Cheerleaders will wrap the presents.
Okay. And thank them for a successful boutique, and I'm sure your gifts are gonna be well-received, Dr. Luft. Do I have any public comments on any of the agenda items? I actually want to comment, I guess, on, on Dr. Luft's presentation. I did not attend the gratitude festival, 'cause I was at the other event, as was Jeanette Mestreda, and I believe you were there too, Mr. Cohen, I can't recall, which was a panel discussion on gender and gender identity and gender expression, and issues surrounding all of that, facilitated by Glisten, but presented by members of our community and neighboring communities. And I felt gratitude being in that audience, the openness, the spirit of inclusion, the empathy for how people feel when they are not there, living their truth, and the okayness to live whatever that truth is. It was, it was really humbling. It was really humbling, so I just, I, it was one of those moments when I'm proud to live in this community. Moving on to new business.
I guess also, it's not necessarily on the agenda, but it is part of the agenda. Jill, I wanna, I wanna praise you for the use of this format, very clean, very easily readable, I think it's a really good base for, so it's not too flowery, it doesn't get distracted with all kinds of things, I think it's, it's solid, I know it's very much nitpicky, but I think it's a solid imagery.
Thank you.
Very important to say that, I know.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Ferraro, new business, number one.
Oh, I didn't bring your glasses, okay. Whereas pursuant to the requirements of Education Law Section 3012D and Part 30-33.10, wow, of the rules of the Board of Regents, the individuals named below have completed all the necessary training to be certified as lead evaluator of the building principles. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education hereby certifies the following individual is a lead evaluator of the building principles, Dr. Jeremy Luft.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Congratulations.
Number two.
Be it resolved... Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby amends appointment of Sasha Babalaw that was acted upon at the June 20th, 2019 Board of Education meeting as follows, where Sasha Babalaw has been previously tenured as a teacher in New York State Public School District or BOCs, and where said teacher has presented proof of receipt and APPR rating in the final year of service in the previous service in such school district or BOCs. Now therefore be it resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education hereby appoint Sasha Babalaw to a three-year probationary term as an elementary teacher commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2020, in the tenure area of special education...
2022.
I'm sorry, 2022, I need my glasses, in the tenure area of special education on Step 2-A of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Babalaw holds students with disabilities, math seven through twelve, student with disabilities generalist, and math seven through twelve professional certification in order to be eligible for appointment to tenure. Said, in order to be appointed, in order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said teacher must have at least three years of effective or highly effective APPR ratings during the probationary term that may count in the ratings from the previous employment as referenced above, and may not receive an ineffective APPR rating in the final year of probation.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just for the community, just real quick, for the community, what we originally did when we hired the person, we had it down for four years, 'cause we didn't have the history, and we had the data, it's the 23rd.
All in favor? Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board appoints Lindsay Edwards as a substitute teaching assistant commencing on January 2nd, 2020, at the substitute salary rate of eighty-five dollars per day, to be amended to a probationary teaching assistant tenure area appointment on Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule, prorated upon NYSED's issuance of Ms. Edwards' teaching assistant certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number five.
Four.
Four, sorry, Dr..
Resolved the recommendation of superintendent of schools to include the disposal of the following surplus lighting equipment, which has no further value to the district, an attempt to sell or auction equipment will be made, the Altman Three Cell Sky CYC units.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Now, number five.
Resolved the recommendation of superintendent of schools to enter into an intermunicipal agreement between the County of Putnam and the district for use of district facilities as emergency shelters when needed, as per document number 108/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Number six.
Resolved to authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a confidential and non-disclosure agreement with Ulster, Orange Ulster BOCs regarding staff data, as per document number 107/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is with regard to the teacher of the Mandarin Chinese courses in the district, we get that in conjunction with the BOCs.
All in favor? Aye. Number seven.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2020-21 budget timeline... timeline as per document number 109/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So this will, if we approve, this will be posted?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Number eight.
Resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve the revised substitute salary schedule for the district as per document 110/20 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? I know we had discussion about this at the loss, at the last board meeting in terms of being competitive with our neighbors, but also we had discussion, in that discussion, attempts to, when we have the control, to control meeting subs, not sending teachers to multiple trainings at the same time, really trying to manage that cause, especially in light of some of the budget conversation. But we did have a conversation regarding this at the last meeting. All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through eight as presented at the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was asleep. We're approving CSE, CPSE placements, we're approving a generous donation to the John C. Kleiner Memorial Fund, $1,000 from the Hope for Youth Foundation, that's Mr. Witt's Foundation, and $1,000 from Mrs. Joan Kleiner. And we thank them both for generously supporting our district all these years. We approve a day without pay for a staff member, we're approving additional club advisors for the choreographer for our spring musical, we're approving postseason coaching stifens for the fall, for the girls' swimming coach and for the head coach of the cross-country team. We're approving chaperones for the all-state music festivals, we're approving staff members to aid a classified student in after-school activities. And we're approving revised, no, that's.
That was moved to.
That was it, yes. Yeah, that's it.
All, all in favor? Aye. I'd like to open it up to public comments on any topic or anything from the Board.
Well, I went to the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Advocacy 101. The student, the culinary arts students from Southwest BOCES, Southern Westchester BOCES prepared the meal. Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. The desserts alone would have been worth the drive down there in the dark and the rain. But it was absolutely fantastic. They served us. One of the interesting things, they talked about capitalizing on personal contacts between board members and officials in, you know, our elected officials. And they talked about building relationships can only take 30 seconds. And here are some ideas that they had. Invite your elected official to read a story to schoolchildren. Mail them your school newspaper. Make a phone call, send a thank you email. Like and retweet the positive efforts of your Senator or Assembly member. And relationships are built year-round through these 30-second efforts. And I, so I thought that was really good advice. I don't know if we've ever done any of those things, but I thought that was really good. February 9th and 10th is the Capitol Conference for Advocacy. Guy and I went last year just on Sunday. I, I just really can't imagine staying over, but I have to really think about it because they say that the meetings with the state, with our legislatures are really important. So I don't know, I'll have to think about that. But the other thing is there's a legislative, annual legislative forum for superintendents and board members, Thursday, January 30th. You have to sign up, I think, through Maureen. There's no fee for Westchester-Putnam and they want you to, or SVP. It's the 20th Annual Legislative Forum, talk with New York State Legislators, legislators face to face. This is an opportunity to make sure lawmakers know what our public schools need. So I think back to what Jill said, and they talked a lot about, Westchester-Putnam has, you know, with the foundation aid and other kind of things, we have some significant issues, but if we don't stand together and advocate for them, they'll get swept under the rug. So if anybody's interested in going, I'm going, I don't know, Jeremy, if you're going or, or any other board members would like to go. So it's at Purchase in Harrison.
I have gone in the past and it is worthwhile.
Yeah. So, okay, that's it.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else?
Oh, one other thing, the Communities That Care Coalition met the other day, Dan Murray was there, Sam Oliverio. They have two students now, middle school, eighth graders, and Jeannie's not here. I don't know their names, but I will try to get them to you for the next meeting. Oh my gosh, these girls were so good. They were, they participated in the discussions, they gave their opinion, they disagreed with us when they thought that we were off track. They were such a positive force at that meeting. You know, again, student voice is, is just amazing. It was just amazing. Anyway, I'll get, try to get their names and mention it at the next board meeting, but anytime that we can encourage students to participate in those kind of things, really hearing from them is powerful, so.
And a lot of the issues of the Communities That Care really begin and start having some of the areas of concern in the middle school years.
That's exactly what their point was. Not, not even that they're happening in the high school, but that they're starting even in fifth and sixth grade and blossoming in seventh and eighth. And so, you know, how to focus on them. So anyway, it was really good.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done.
Excellent information, Barbara. All right, at this time, I would like to resolve to convene an executive session for one matter of the employment history of one particular person and two matters of collective negotiation pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Good night and happy celebrating of whatever you may celebrate during the next couple of weeks, and we will see you next year. I love saying that.